Four hour. A June the 15th special call meeting today. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Jett will be attending today. I have received a request by Mr. Ronnie Jett to participate in the meeting tonight by electronic communication from a remote.
You've got him covered, Robert.
All right, let me start over. I have received a request by Mr. Ronnie Jett to participate in the evening, in the meeting tonight by electronic communication from a remote location due to a personal medical condition. I have approved such participation under the county's adopted remote participation policy and ask that the board of supervisors ratify this decision to allow Mr. Jett to participate remotely.
I so move.
All right, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jett, are you online now?
Boylan, can you hear us? We's online.
Can, can you hear us now?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Can you hear us now, Mr. Jett? Let's give him just a minute, see if I can get a reply from him before we start. Mr. Jett, can you hear us? We can't hear you at the time.
He's got two devices on which he's calling the feedback. Got a phone probably and his computer.
Yeah, he's gonna need to cut one of them off in there, Rob.
Yeah.
Can you get him? All right, can, can you hear us now? Mr. Jett? We can't, we cannot hear, hear you yet. Ronnie, can you hear us?
I've had no contact before.
I can hear you.
Careful what you say, Ronnie.
If he's on his computer, make sure he hasn't muted his computer.
Check your computer to make sure you have not muted it.
Your mic.
That would be your mic there.
It's unmuted, but can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us now?
Okay, wave your hand if you can hear me, Dr. White, from it. Okay, thank you, go ahead. I can't hear it all, we're still working on it. That ain't so bad.
What's he got there? I was gonna say, can you hear us?
Yeah.
I hear you now.
You can hear us now?
All good.
Yes.
All right, glad to have you here today at the meeting.
Shout out to the day, guys.
That's all right, don't worry about that.
We live in the northern neck in Northelman County in particular.
All right, our first item today would be a budget, budget presentation from Ms. Jeanne Nelson in the Navinak Middlesex Free Health Clinic.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity and Luttrell and Morgan, I greatly appreciate the rescheduling. You know, it's 30 years that I've been coming. Life hadn't gotten any less complicated in the healthcare world. This, this was our biggest year of growth, actually, in any one year. We added 600 new patients to our roster of, you know, of patients. We were also able, COVID had a lot of complications and we never closed one day during that time, but one thing that it did allow is that sometimes healthcare providers chose to change. And so this year, we were able to add another part-time physician as well as another full-time RN. Two positions that have been very challenging to fill in this rural area, very common and throughout America, but we have struggled to be able to, to find all the levels of personnel that we've been able to do. So in our medical, we now have two, a medical director, a part-time MD, a full-time nurse practitioner, Northumberland lady, as well as two RNs and a medical assistant. So our staff and our medical, we've finally been able to grow it, which is, was greatly needed. We have just received, actually, a grant that will be able to add a full-time dental hygienist. And so the challenge is, I'm putting it out there, if anyone knows of anybody, or even two part-times, we're willing to take. We have a very large dental clinic and a great need for that as well. The, you know, once again, in our clinic, some people come to medical, dental and pharmacy, some just come to dental, some just come to pharmacy and some just come to medical. So there's all different kinds of combinations. The Free Health Clinic has continued to reach out to fill those gaps of the uninsured and underinsured and, and really provide those level of healthcare needs that are necessary to stay at work and to continue to move and be productive in, in our, in our communities as well as healthy in there for their families. So it's been very a big, you know, in a recent meeting that we had, our dentist who is four days a week, and then we partnered with VCU School of Dentistry where their fourth-year students come and are, we, my dentist is adjunct faculty to VCU, so he's able to supervise the students. And so in one of our recent tours that he, that we gave, he had been in a private practice before and he's been with us about a year and a half. And he said in his, in his private practice, he would have been able to do, if he did 20 dentures, that was a pretty good amount. And since his first, this past year and a half, he has been able to provide 500 dentures. So, you know, what a big difference and what it shows is that if you don't have access what the needs are. So being able to establish some of those basic ongoing health, whether it be for diabetes, hypertension, or, you know, being able to continue to smile comfortably and, and be able to eat, you know, those are really key things. I think that, that, when he said that, you know, to be honest, I've never done a private practice, so that was surprising to me. That 20 a year was, was a pretty big number and, and a year and a half, we've done 500. So we continue to move forward and, and fill the gap. You know, healthcare is just more challenging, the unwinding of Medicaid has been quite complicated and, and also very difficult for people to maneuver through the healthcare haze. But our, our staff is very supportive and constantly trying to, you know, what, what the truth is, is we'll see the gap sooner than anyone else. And with that, we've been able to manage through some of the healthcare maze and partnering with the different hospitals as well as the different volunteer groups that we've been able to pull. It's really been an effective for the communities to be able to move forward, well, for the patients and as well as the communities to move forward. Are there any questions?
Any board members have any questions?
No, at this time.
Mr. Jett, you have any questions? Mr. Jett, do you have any questions? You still online? Okay. All right, I'll assume he doesn't have.
No, I did not have any questions, Richard.
All right, thank you. All right, any board, no board members have any questions? Staff have any questions? All right, well, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks very much. Thanks for your all's support.
All right, good to see you again. All right, next item would be county administrator items. Luttrell, I'll let you take care of that.
All right, yes, sir. Just following up as far as the budget work session and, hey, Robert, if I could get that screen up. I just wanted to go over, we've held the public hearing on the county budget. Possible blow that up, any, Robert, or?
All right, just wanted to go through some items that we were looking at as potential cuts, just for the board's consideration. Anything on the left side there that is marked in green is an item that a department head had reached back out to me or I discussed with that department head on some potential cuts or reductions to their budget. So I appreciate those departments getting back to me. The first item that I want to cover is, under the general government administration, there are quite a few categories under that. The first one on page six, 1101, 1001, salaries supervisors. The, the board is asked to go from $6,000 to $10,000 annual salaries. That has not been changed since 2007. And one of the things that we're looking at here, by code, that cannot go into place until January 1st after the election and new calendar year. So there would be, the way we originally put that in the budget was for the full $10,000 for the full year. So that would not take place until January, so there would be some savings there, about $10,000. Next item, 1101, 3002, on the same page, professional services. That line item was actually to be level funded, there was some discussion earlier on about some items that the county may undertake as far as needing engineers or whether it was for roof replacements and different things. So we had left that line item alone in the, the budget, but that is one area in which we can reduce the, reduce that, that line item, zero that line item out rather than level fund it. Any projects come up, we would just need to do a supplemental appropriation back to that, that line item. Next line item, 1101, 8011, was a 2% salary increase. We had done this previously with, depending on what the, the state was going to do with the state side. The state has not, they are going with the, the 5%. So at this point in time, I feel that it would be safe to just go ahead and remove that 2%, which is 118,772. Next item, 1206, 3003, on page nine, the county audit. We just received our engagement letter and due to past years' experience, the, the audit is going up by about $8,250. So that's actually an increase reflected out of, compared to what is currently in the proposed budget. Next item, 1210, 3002, the reassessment on page 11. We had originally put, I think it was 300, let me check before I tell you wrong. We had originally put $275,000 in that line item. We can reduce that to $50,000. The last audit, the way we had done that is, we took and put half of what we thought the cost was going to be in the first year and the other half, we made up the following year. And the way that, that's going to work is in fiscal year '24, so about February, March timeframe, we were going to put that out for bid. So really, we won't have any expenses until the February, March timeframe regarding that. The fiscal year '25 is probably where you're going to really see a hit on that. And some of the figures that I'm hearing as far as doing reassessments, the, the cost has gone up significantly. So we will see a huge increase, if we reduce this, we will see a huge increase in that in fiscal year '25. Now, that won't go into place until around 2026, calendar year 2026, fiscal year '27 budget. And as you do your reassessment, what happens is, if you have a high assessment or a low assessment, you go through an equalization period in that, that rate is equalized at that, that point in time. So it's not going to be what the current rate is now. I mean, if you get, if your reassessment is higher, then more than likely, your rate's going to be a lower tax rate, real estate tax rate and vice versa. So I just wanted to explain that a little bit further. So we can remove about 225,000 out of that, leave about $50,000 in that particular line item, but just keep in mind that you will see a large increase on that in the following fiscal year.
What kind of figures are you hearing for reassessments?
I was speaking to the commissioner of revenue and what was between $15 and $20 per parcel is probably close to $25, $30 per parcel.
Might be time for either individually or regionally, consider hiring your own assessor. That kind of price, you could hire a good support, a good assessor and support staff and do it maybe on a four-year rotation, get it more aligned with market values one way or the other. But if you're looking at 500,000, it's going to probably then be 600 plus and.
Yeah. You're looking at about 19, a little over 19,000 parcels, so.
And we have such great choices in assessors anyway for that purpose. I mean, basically, they got almost a corner on the market for the few, it's basically the same ones, this year, that one, whatever.
They're, they're very far and few between. There's only maybe three or four, if that, in the state.
Something to consider down the road, but I think it's got to be considered either collectively or individually.
Next item is 1401, 3004, under the IT budget, repairs and equipment, page 15. We can, there were some room alert systems, temperature sensors, different things like that that we can reduce. And then there was a phone upgrade system that Mr. Haley was looking at possibly doing next fiscal year. We can reduce those at 15,380. 1401, 3005, maintenance service software, a reduction, 28,600. One thing that we were looking at was a dedicated line from Breeze Line to help support the phone system, since our phone system is internet-based now. And then reduction in off-site backup hosting and there was an awareness training that he was looking at possibly doing. So I think there were, there's some savings there that we can possibly look at. So they were the items as far as general government administration. On the public safety side, 3102, 1001, sheriff's office budget, an option maybe to remove the deputy position on page 22. Now, keep in mind, there is one vehicle under the CIP program that is tied to that, that deputy as well. So that would, the deputy position, and this includes the benefits, is 74,739. One item that the sheriff did mention was the removal of the four dispatch part-time positions, 3102, 1002 line item. That would be a savings of $25,000.
Did he explain why he was offering that? Given the problems they've had in hiring and maintaining dispatchers?
I don't know. He, he had sent a letter in, I'll have to go back and look at that specific letter. Cause he, he's online. He's online? He is, yes, sir. I don't know if he would like to comment on that or not.
Just a letter, sir. Go ahead, Ronnie.
I think, that's Johnny.
Yeah.
Sheriff Beecham.
Go ahead.
Sheriff Beecham?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, please.
So I requested four part-time, we were down at that time, four full-time positions. We were able to fill those, but we're now down one. So I needed, so part-time help to help cover when we have one or more full-time positions vacant. And that 25,000 probably wouldn't even, wouldn't even help a whole lot, I'd be giving them a lot of hours, but I just need, on my short form time, I need part-time help to fill the number that Jennifer and I came up with that, when we're down our people.
Okay, any board members have any questions? Questions for Sheriff Beecham?
Do you, Sheriff, do you think this would anyway affect your operational capabilities?
I'm not sure. I just thought it was an area that we would just try to get by and, you know, try to save some money.
Well, you can also, as you know, use part-time dispatchers potentially to being hired full-time. This gives you basically to observe them part-time, but.
It does, it does give us a, a way to observe people. You know, we could do the same with the deputies, but I just don't have money for that. But it is a possibility to observe their work and see if they're going to fit the full time. You are correct.
All right, any other questions? Ronnie, you have any questions?
I don't have any, any time right now.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff Beecham.
All right, continuing under public safety, the next item, 3202, 7005, motor vehicles and equipment, volunteer fire departments, possible reduction. They had asked for, the chiefs had asked for doubling the, the amount that they had received. And typically, in that particular line item, we do a 5% increase. Instead of doing the full amount, one option may be doing half the amount that they are requesting. Instead of the 97,000, do 49,238 reduction on that. Next item is 3203, 1001, and I put this in the side column because there are some other, there's other information that kind of goes with this. It's a, the potential of removing four EMS positions. Now, I did sit down with Chief Balderson.
Here.
And, oh, he snuck in on me. Thank you. And he, he did provide a write-up with some information related to the EMS billing monies and how we could possibly use those for, help offset the operational budget and still push monies towards the, the CIP portion of that. I don't know if you have any specific questions related to, to that. The, the way that was set up, what he was proposing was to do 120,000 to the operational budget and 160,000 for the CIP. We, we get about 280,000 annually based off of the, the EMS billing. So he was just looking at a possible, way to, to split those, those monies.
Based upon current uses, to the best of your ability to guess, how long would an ambulance last?
As you know, that basis is on call volume.
Yeah, I know, that's why I said, to guess, best of your ability.
Basically, I've set it up for a five-year program based on 125,000 miles on the gasoline engines. And that's based off the call volume we have now. Obviously, that could change. If it decreases, we could go extend that. If it increases, we'd have to decrease it. So that's what I base that off of, as well as looking at other jurisdictions and what they do as well in trying to stay within the boundaries of what the current guidelines are that everybody's putting theirs at.
And of course, as Jimmy has mentioned, that doesn't assume any grants you might get to help do.
That's correct. The, the document I provided does not preclude or assume any grant monies. Obviously, if we were to get the 50-50 grant from OEMS, that would obviously help the capital improvement process tremendously. So that, that form you have there does not assume those grant monies. That's correct.
And your life PAC 15s, what's the expected life of those?
So our last replacement, I found records that showed that we replaced those at the year seven mark. So with that, I kept with that year seven mark for the current life PAC 15s and that first one to be replaced is currently at year three. So that's why I put it in that document where it is, so it will get us at that seven-year mark. Now, with that caveat of, with the life PAC 15, I'm still waiting to hear back from Stryker. If we're able to update that again.
You can.
To prolong that.
We are doing, Northelman is redoing that right now.
Okay. So when we get to that year seven mark, are they, are they projecting that we can upgrade those then?
I can't say that far.
Right.
We're doing it right now. Ours are about 10 years, I think.
Yeah.
We're right at the point of no more warranties.
So that would be a, a huge benefit or cost savings as well. But I wanted to do a worst-case scenario for you all for capital improvement with the understanding that grants and the life PAC 15 refurbishment may be ways to save money on that. But the document that, that I provided is what I consider to be worst-case scenario of expenditures versus money coming in.
You gotta, you probably in one sense have a better chance of getting grants from OEMS for life PACs than you would a squad.
Possibly, yes. We have one in now, hoping to hear something in the near future on it, yeah.
You should hear about July the first.
Yeah.
All right. And about removing the four positions is.
That was my proposal in a way to keep those four positions in the budget, is to take that money to offset the impact to the general fund budget, is to utilize some of that EMS billing money so that we could keep the four positions in the budget.
My question in concern, if you're going to have four more providers, we only got one chief. That's 20-plus full-time employees, which the chief is expected to supervise 24/7. I think it's fair to the chief to have a deputy chief or captain, whatever word you want to do. I mean, as Jimmy and those, you're past Hispanic control for yourself.
Sure, and it's my intent, if we're able to get these four positions and move the current shift leaders to what we'll call EMS supervisor position, is to put more. is to put more of the workload on them than what they currently are doing now. To kind of take to your point of shifting some of that workload. But yes, in the future, I look to hopefully be able to do that as well. But that, that's the intent with the four people, is to get those people onto a EMS supervisor role and be able to get them more workload and more supervi-, if you will, on a...
Like, we got an assistant county administrator. You don't have an assistant chief with technically more direct reports.
I think a lot of this was to address the staffing issues too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that's the main concern, is to address the staffing issue.
Sure. Because in the last, in since I've been here, mandatory overtime has been an issue. We try to utilize part-time people as much as possible. But there are cases where people call out sick and then we have to hold somebody over for a certain amount of time. And so that, that kind of wanes on morale a little bit when you have to hold somebody to fill that spot. So that, that all ties into that as well, is being able to, to fill that spot, show someone call out and not have to hold somebody mandatory unless, you know, we get a couple of calls.
And then OEMS has got proposed regulations fatigue management, which requires after twelve hours to have a rest period.
Yes.
And nobody knows what that looks like yet.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know what the definition of the rest period is going to be. And, you know, as you pointed out previously, the town hall meetings and all the process still has to happen with that. And there's a couple of other things that go into that.
Yeah, they're bumping up the ALS package, equipment requirements too. All right.
Any other questions? Ronnie, you have any questions?
No, sir. No questions.
All right.
Also, in that same document that Chief Balderson provided to you are the EMS billing rates that we currently are, that we currently have, the county has. And it compares that to the other localities around us.
We're not far off on, or we're probably consistent with ALS, I mean, BLS. ALS, a little low on ALS two, but you clearly, we could, with Lancaster and Westmoreland being sixteen dollars per mile, you could potentially bump that up. Although King and Queen and Essex are a little low.
So we're, we're within, we're close proximity, whether kind of in the middle or on some of those. It's, it's not too far off.
That's loaded mile from a patient in the squad to the facility.
Yeah. Let's, we're not too far off.
But you figure some of the trips, the medic group goes to Richmond area hospitals. That would, of course, generally Medicare and Medicaid are only going to pay so much anyway. And insurance is, they pay what they pay.
All right. You have anything else?
While the chief was here, I just wanted to make sure in case you don't have any specific questions related to that.
Balderson, you have any other comments you want to make?
No, sir. Hopefully, I've put the document together well enough to explain.
Yes, you have.
Happy to entertain any questions that you may have proposed to that. Again, the prices or the numbers in there are the high-range numbers.
I see you have medic one here with eighty-nine thousand on it. How often does that vehicle get used?
The reserve medic one is currently in use right now.
Yes, it is. Saw it this afternoon.
Both of our reserve units are in use, as both of the frontline units are out of service. One of them is at the shop currently for repairs, and as soon as that one comes back, I'm sending the next one. And those should be warranty repairs through four.
Well, I am glad to have those two extra units.
Yes, sir.
Is, I've heard a rumor, is anything to the gasoline engine having challenges?
Other than what's going on right now with the coal packs, that's the only thing that I'm aware of. I have been told prior to me coming to this position that one of those units was out for an extended period of time for electrical issues. And that, that's the reason medic two, I believe, has many miles than medic one does currently.
The other ones, the diesel has the DEF issue. If you don't do that right.
Right. Exactly.
You get carried up the road.
Yep.
Seen that too many of times.
Well, they're all going to have their problems, as long as it's not too many.
DEF, if you don't pay attention to the carbon buildup, that happens.
Yes.
It goes into limp mode.
Don't have that problem with your gas engine.
No. What you have otherwise, because you got a heavy rig, so you got challenges from that, so it's...
Oh, yeah. It's always, always something.
One other thing, too, is we're having some mechanical issues, I guess, with the rehab unit. And we are looking at the possibility of using one of the reserve units that we have as far as turning that into a rehab unit and bring to the board to surplus the, the current rehab unit. But just to make you all aware of that particular issue.
That was our old seventy-four, and I could tell you, it served its useful life.
I just wanted to make the board aware of that, too, so...
All right. Thank you.
All right. That was pretty much it for public safety. For the public works, forty-three oh five, one thousand one sanitary district position, page thirty-six. Possible reduction, fifty-five thousand, three fifty-three. And that's, includes the benefits for that, that position. I believe Mr. Waldorf's asked for that position for two or three years now, so... Next group is under health and welfare. Fifty-three oh two, fifty-six twelve, food bank. This is all on page forty. Possible nine thousand dollar reduction. Fifty-six fourteen, contribution to the Haven, reduction of four fifty. Fifty-six sixteen, Northern Neck Free Health Clinic, possible reduction of forty-six, two seventy-one. Fifty-six twenty-one, Little League, possible reduction of eight thousand. And six, six thousand five, social services. I spoke to Ms. Clayton, and she had indicated that it was possibly a ten thousand dollar savings there. Other than social services, the previous ones, Food Bank, Haven, Free Health Clinic, Little League, would be level funding those agencies if, if the board did, did those reductions. Moving on to the capital improvement projects. Ninety-one oh three, seven thousand twenty-two. This is on page fifty-four. Under the county CIP transfer, we were looking at doing a fifty thousand dollar increase just to start building the CIP fund with a reduction of fifty thousand dollars. That would still put a hundred thousand dollars within the, the CIP for future projects for the CIP committee to consider. Next item is ninety-one oh three, seven thousand twenty-seven, school CIP transfer. Possible reduction of eight forty, two seventy-four. Next item, ninety-one oh three, seven thousand twenty-nine, capital vehicles. That includes the sheriff's office vehicles. The one nineteen eight hundred on the left column there relates to the grant, the law enforcement grant that the sheriff has recently received. So that's why that reduction is, is there. And I believe that the sheriff indicated that for one vehicle, he would need about fifty-six thousand dollars. So after you take out the one nineteen eight hundred to leave fifty-six thousand dollars and you remove the deputy position, you could possibly remove an additional thirty-nine thousand, two hundred, if the deputy position was removed. Next item is ninety-one oh three, seven thousand thirty-one, capital emergency radio system. You could possibly do a significant increase there. The only challenge there with moving forward with that particular project. The first-year payment, we're looking at around ninety thousand dollars. And I left a hundred thousand dollars in that particular line item, which would reduce that four, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, the, the annual payment after that, now that this is based off of the five million dollar loan. The annual payment after that would be five hundred and seven thousand dollars, roughly. So there again, you would see a large increase for fiscal year twenty-five, not fiscal year twenty-four, but you would see a huge increase on fiscal year twenty-five. So we can look at some other options on that. We can do two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year and then bump that up again, all the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars next fiscal year. So it doesn't hit all in one year. But if the board is looking at making the specific cuts or reductions, we could go down to a hundred thousand dollars to cover that first year's expense.
The grant that the sheriff's department got, one of the things that would pay for is twenty-eight handheld radios and four mobiles.
That's correct.
With the contract, would those figures need, these numbers of radios need to be reduced?
Yes.
From that? So that would be a savings in your radio proposal?
That, that's something that we're currently working with L-Three Harris. Actually, the contract just came back with review from the, the attorney. So that is something that I can get with the sheriff on and get with Wayne Duff to, to figure that out.
That's about almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollar difference right there.
Yeah.
That would help the big project. We'll make sure that's deducted.
Let's not pay for too, too, too many radios.
That was, they were the main items that I looked at. I didn't, I wasn't sure what questions the board had related to any of these items or what questions the board had related to the, the school budget. If there's anything we could try and answer on, on the county side. Or Dr. Worgo and Ms. Booth are here from the school as well, on the, the school side.
Board, board members have any questions?
Your radios, Chief Balderson. Could, would it be possible to do the RSFA grant for the radios, the portables and mobiles for emergency services through that grant?
Yes, possibly. Yes, sir.
That would be another, I mean, it's a, if it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of radio equipment, it's a fifty-fifty grant. But saving fifty percent of that's still another cost savings. And it's...
The, the only thing I would say to that is, is yes, it would probably be beneficial to do that. But I don't know if we would have the timeframe between signing the contract and putting it forward and receiving the grant. But it's something certainly after we get the radio system up and going, and we need to buy new radios in the future. It would certainly be something that we could look at to maintain that system with.
But I think it would be enhanced if it was with all the squads and the sheriff's department, maybe even fire department. The more you get under one, it adds your points, as you know, Jimmy.
Yes, that, that would be a revenue fund for that, I would think. Yes, sir.
I think if, if you apply, I think that could be something that could be in the contract with Harris Corporation that we could negotiate that if we receive a grant.
We, we can check into that, too, and talk to Wayne Duff with L-Three Harris, but also with Chris Colt, the bond counsel, to see how that would impact any of the financing that we are seeking with Bank of America. So we can certainly reach out to them and see what, what that... Do you know when the next round of the rescue squad assistance fund is?
Yeah, it should be September the fifteenth. It should be the cutoff.
Okay.
September.
Yeah. An announcement in December.
Okay.
The existing radios that your agency has right now, would they have to be upgraded or purchased to operate on the new system?
We only have four portables currently.
Okay.
So that would be something that I would have to check on if what we currently have is the tri-band to match the rest. But we only have four of those radios currently, the handhelds, yes.
All right. What else do you have?
Unless the board wants to go through these a little bit closer and talk about which ones you would like to reduce or they do have a planning commission meeting in here at seven, so...
I'd like to be able to take them home and go through it and just send the email back. It's doable.
I, I think we need to go through as many as possible today with the time we have. I'm not satisfied with quite a few because we, we have more people in some of these, like the Free Health Clinic. Who's telling us that more people are applying. And social service, have we talked to them about that reduction? But how would it hurt them? I mean, you've got a lot of people at their service, so we've got to make sure we don't hurt, hurt those people.
Yes, sir. Jackie Clayton actually called me regarding the email that I sent out to the department heads. And looking back through her budget, that she had indicated that she thought that she could get, reduce it by the ten thousand dollars and she would be okay.
Okay. How about the Free Health Clinic? I mean, you had quite a few, I believe she mentioned a couple of hundred more that signed up. Have you talked to her to see how, how that would hurt her?
I, I have not. No, sir.
I think we need to, because you have quite a few people that, like I said, the last time with the tax, people had to pay and cost of food and gas and all that. You have a lot of people on social security. We have to try to look out for these people the best we can without hurting them, you know? I mean, we don't want people to have to go without food and medical appointments because we are reducing, we're taking too much away. So I think we need to talk to and see how much that she could afford to, to lose or not hurt, hurt the people that, that she's helping was the Free Health Clinic. You haven't had a chance to talk with her either, have you?
Not with the Free Health Clinic. We had her scheduled to come in earlier this, this year. And I think she was out of town or something. She, either way, she couldn't make that, that particular meeting. So that's why she was here tonight.
And the food bank, I know we have quite a few food banks around. And every time I pass through, it's a lot of people that depend on those food banks. So we have, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to anyone that run those food banks, but... but every time I pass them, I see a lot of cars and I see a lot of people depending on So I would like to see us reach out, see, that's a whole lot of money that we have. I wouldn't want to be a part of voting to hurt, hurt people that need to help. We have to remember, we got the largest population is sixty-five and older. We have to really consider a lot of these cuts.
Is that all we have?
I prefer not to even get a cut myself and to hurt some of these people. All right, that's my feeling.
All right, anyone else have any comments?
Only comment I have is after the questions and concerns at our public meeting, I have to wonder, is it appropriate for the board of supervisors to consider a salary increase? Only ten thousand dollars this fiscal year, but twenty thousand increase, but that's a total sixty percent increase in base salary right now. I know, we talked about it last meeting, that's a big percentage, but it's a dollars amount, but I think it's a symbolism of, should this board, and it will not affect me one way or the other, should, should this board get an increase in salary when we're cutting everybody else?
Right.
I think it's a question of fairness across the board. If you wanted to give an increase, give no more than what county employees get, the five percent, which would be three hundred dollars. I know there hasn't been an increase since two thousand and seven, but the general assembly, if you want to see them, they haven't had a salary increase since probably thirty years ago. Now, they got one advantage, they're considered employees, so they can get VRS. We're not employees for that purpose. And as a former state employee, that would have been lovely. I can't even buy it, but I think that's a question of fairness that needs to be considered trauma.
Right.
All right, anything else? Ron, do you have any comments?
No, I guess so, not really. I mean, I agree with what Tom, what Tom is saying. I think it's something that's long overdue, what we get through the salary, not much. I know, you didn't get into it from the point of the start, but it's gotten to the point where they don't even cover our expenses anymore. I think just trying to keep, keep up with the rest of whatever, I don't know, like this, it's a touchy situation, but some of our protectors.
All right, thank you. Does the board want to keep on or do we want to move on to something else?
We're gonna have to do something.
Right. We've got other issues, too, so, what's your pleasure?
Well, I, Mr. Long suggested county administrator needs to read out this people. I suggested to take this home and look through it.
We can, so we'll certainly have meetings next week, so...
Right.
We have a meeting early next week, we give a little chance to talk to these people, then we can make some decisions in, give us all a chance to review it a little bit more.
Whatever the board wants to do, but I tell you, the clock is ticking. We've got fifteen more days to do a budget.
Right.
And we, we need to start doing something, at least by next week on us.
Well, I'm gonna be in the other banks at the end of this month. I guess I'm gonna be on the phone like Mr. Jet.
No, we don't want that, we want to do it before you go.
Well, we gotta do something then.
That's right.
It says, they always say, fish or cut bait. Or if you want to be a little crude, I might as well say that one.
Does the member stay in there, ma'am?
Let, excuse me, let, what stay in? Let all those items that Jim talked about stay, stay in?
Would you stay in, Richard?
Let, now, which items are you referring to, to let stay in?
Yeah. For Tom, I was hoping to refer to the raise.
Yeah, and how about the items that, that Jim was talking about?
I can't understand what you're saying on that.
All right, you were, you were talking about the board's salary and you and Tommy, Jim was talking about the free health clinic and the haven...
All I'm talking about is board salary right now.
All right, you want to leave it in?
Yes, that would be my motion.
All right. Anything else you want to leave in? All right. Any other comments from the board?
I agree with Tommy, we had to make a decision to go ahead and pass this budget, you know, and I think Mr. Tadlock should go home and look over these items again, and next week we need to go ahead and make that decision. But one thing, I'm not voting for a raise for the board of supervisors because it's not, it won't be, it's not fair. When we're cutting other things, we're gonna, that doesn't make sense. I didn't get on the board for that, I got on the board to help people in the community and help the community, not to, not to make money. All right, as far as that, and I'm sure most of you are, so I'm here to help people.
They changed how local governing bodies could raise their own salaries. It used to require a separate ordinance, which required a public hearing. Now it can be just included in the budget. And I think we heard from the people the first of this month what they thought about raises and various things. I'm not gonna support it.
Right.
All right, any, any other comments on anything? I'd like, we can have a meeting Tuesday, can't we? And we can work on this part of the budget and approve something by then.
I thought we had one set.
We got one Thursday.
Got one Thursday.
We need to double up on our meetings. Get it over with before you have to leave.
Frankly, if I have to do it, I have to do it, but it's not what I prefer. I'd be with my daughter and son and grandson, I'd rather spend time with my grandson than being in the board and eating nuts against anybody else at this table or in the community or on the, online. But we got a motion on the table.
All right, we got a motion, did we get a second? Doesn't require a second, any other discussion? If not, all those, what was that, Mr. Bray?
The motion is, the motion is to leave it in there.
Yeah.
But it, it can be changed.
Can be changed later.
Okay. How are you gonna change it?
You can always take it back. We've changed our mind before on things.
Not if it's in the budget.
Yeah.
I guess you can do anything, but that certainly isn't, that would not be a very good thing to do, either, either do it or don't.
No, it wouldn't be, but...
And if you don't have enough courage, vote one way or the other, don't vote.
But the motion is to leave it in the budget right now.
Yeah.
So any other discussion? If there's no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, the motion passes three to two.
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Tadlock, you have, was a possible reduction, the school board CIP transfer eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand and change. What would that do for the world besides eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand? What's...
What does that do to the...
CIP and everything?
Well, at that point, what, of course, the board had the, the public hearing on it last week, and that included several of the items that that CIP committee had reviewed. At that point, then, there was, there would be no money for those, those particular projects. There wasn't any other funding identified for those, those items.
Let me try and read, find, I'll find that in the paper. What does that specifically request or cover?
I believe a hundred and ten thousand of that was for the well, and we're trying It's the flooring upgrades for the NES, rooftop stairway installation, concrete walkway repairs for NMS, NHS, buses, and the well replacement.
But that by itself could be paid for out of the school construction entitlement program, whatever it's called?
Yeah, the, the buses probably would not be able to be covered under that, but the other items would be.
So you're saying everything except the bus?
Anything else?
The only thing I have is, could you ask, contact Ms. Nelson and get the age of the people that they serve? They've got all the other demographics, but age is omitted. Serving a significant sixty-five and older, they are certainly Medicare, or they have to have Part A under Medicare, whether they have B or whatever, but they have to have A. So there is some health insurance potential there. But I'd like to know, that's the only, one demographic I don't see, because then when I compare the eligibility, they're using, for medical, it's... Put it down. For medical, one person, thirty-six thousand plus or three thousand a month. Dental, one person, forty-three thousand plus or thirty-six. I want to know how many people under the age of, what are the age breaks?
Fifty-one thousand, just going to schools?
No, that was health department, I think. But I, I would guess it's not gonna be a significant sixty-five and older. There'll be some.
We'll certainly reach out to her and ask, ask her that information.
Anything else? Anyone else have anything else?
Hopefully next week we can, you know, go ahead and pass the budget. I mean, it doesn't make sense. I believe Langston, I'm not for sure, somebody said they lost twenty-three teachers. No, we done lost about five in Northumberland, because people just cannot wait around. I mean, they have families, they have to feed the kids, they have to, they have to be sure that they got a job, you know? So we, we are messing with people's livelihood, so we need to go ahead and make a decision and pass these, pass the budget, you know? We gotta put ourselves in some of these positions, and then I think we move a little faster.
Mr. Tadlock, will you get all that information for us?
We will. And I, I don't know if the board has any specific questions for the school division, but I know, I believe next Thursday, one, one of, either Dr. Worgo or Ms. Booth will not be available next Thursday, so I, I don't know if there's something that we could do earlier in the week, Tuesday, or if the board has specific questions tonight for them.
I would certainly hope we can meet on Tuesday.
Mr. Haney?
Tuesday.
Mr. Haney, yes, let me talk to what we have.
You almost did it.
Yes, yes, come on up, please, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors.
Good evening.
Just for clarification, I can be here any evening next week, but if you would like Ms. Booth to be here, she's available on Monday, well, Monday and Tuesday, we could be here.
Tuesday.
So I just wanted to clarify for your schedules.
While, while we're at it, wanna check your schedules right now?
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday, the twentieth, right?
Tuesday?
Tommy, yeah?
Yeah, I can be here. Don't make it, I gotta, my wife's got a doctor, dentist appointment in Mechanicsville at two, but we can be back by five.
All right, if you can be back by five, y'all want to do it at five in on Tuesday, Tuesday the twentieth? And we will have whatever amount of time, because we have no meetings after that.
Let's give you time, let's say five thirty.
You want five thirty?
Mr. Basie has a meeting at six, Economic Development Commission meeting.
What's that?
Mr. Basie has a Economic Development Commission meeting at six.
On the twentieth?
I think we meet five or five thirty, ain't gonna make any difference with Mr. Basie.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna take more than a half hour, I can tell you that.
Even if you have to leave.
Let's say five thirty.
Five thirty then, on the twentieth?
On the twentieth.
All right. Five thirty on the twentieth.
And while Ms. Booth and Dr. Worgo are here, I'd ask Mr. Tadlock to check on all the list of the items for, under the grants, that you have on the list, some were spent and the reimbursements. What I'd like to know is, when were the, when was the money spent and then when was the reimbursement done? I don't, I know you don't have that off the top of your head. I don't, I know you don't have that off the top of your head.
For every item?
Yeah, for every items that expended, and, uh, everyone that's expended, and then also when it was reimbursement request.
Okay, that'll take some time to pull together, because even though the numbers are large on the grant, some of them were small purchases. Um, did, did you receive the updated list I sent out this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, all of SR2 has been expended, but we're in the process of reimbursements, so all of SR2 is done.
One of my concerns, and frankly, it may not make a difference for the grant, what we do with it, but I think I want it sometime, because I think, from a management point of view, when was it spent, when was the reimbursement requested? Because that's been one of the concerns the public has had. And if these expenditures go back a year or better, and now you're getting requests, that shows me a whole lot of problems. I just want to know for sure.
Okay.
And frankly, if you don't have it by next week, I don't, I just want to know it somewhere along line. Because one, if Mr. Tadlock advised me, Tadlock, excuse me, this is money that the county has spent, so I want the county to get its money too, but I've got to see the timeframe in which spend it and request.
Yes, sir, I'll work on that for you.
You don't have to, I mean, Tuesday, even next Thursday is fine, is not a critical, it's just have it by the next board meeting.
In July?
Yeah, July's good enough. Because to me, that goes to the issue that people have had about management.
Certainly.
And if I say long, frankly, if it's suspended, you shouldn't make, the request should have gone right to the county ASAP. Because when you're asking for money, I hope you never delay doing that. I don't. If people talk about tabletop, our table discussions, that's where everybody, when we gonna get our money? What do we have to do to get it? And if you've spent it, the request should have come in. And I understand you're behind the eight ball for coming in late, but that's what I've got to know.
And Mr. Tomlin, I think you just, uh, addressed what I'm about to address. We have had some significant transition in the finance department. We did just have a preliminary audit, and we do have, um, positive feedback that those reimbursements are coming back to the county the way they should be. Um, we are working so hard to make sure that happens. Um, you know, we, we cannot fix the past, but what we can do is look at those audit, um, recommendations, and we're very, working very, very hard to address all areas.
Well, I understand, but you have, it's a process somewhere that fell apart. And if you don't have a process, expenditure, request, that should be bing, bing, it should be two buttons, spent, requested.
Yes, sir, and we are working on that process, and as I said, it is, um, flowing very well, and we plan on continuing that as we move forward. Um, Mrs. Tara Booth, our new finance director, has been the leader of that, so I commend her for that. And again, as soon as that came to our attention, we started working on it, and we will continue to do so. I agree with you.
Probably need to also know what's pending, what's?
Well, I think you'll find it what's been requested and what hadn't been, what's been spent and what have requested, that will tell you it's pending either not by the button to request, or it's just sitting out there. That's an important thing, too.
If I can clarify on that document, if it says pending, that means the request has been made to, um, in Omega in the system, and it has gone through all the approval processes, so right before it has its final approval and is paid is when it says pending, so as of yesterday, that item or those items said pending, so I would expect payment within the next week.
Can you give me a rundown on the active learning grant?
I can. May I come forward? I printed something out.
Yes, ma'am, come forward, please.
So that money has already been received, that was the thirty thousand dollars. Mrs. Williams shared this with me this morning. The active learning grant is also called Walkabout, and it's on-demand adventures that transform space into a movement-rich environment. And so she included some pictures of some of the items that they were hoping to get. They had, had chosen things earlier, but they haven't been, um, ordered yet, because that money hasn't been appropriated, and we just received it this, this school year. Um, she did say, and it's in her write-up here, that these exact items may not be what she ends up getting, because there is a deadline on that active learning grant. That money has to be expended, um, it was June thirtieth. Give me one second, let me grab my sheet real here.
June thirtieth?
Yes, it has a June thirtieth deadline.
When'd you receive it?
Um, I believe the funds came in January, January thirteenth.
Six months, not bad.
I believe that I sent a letter for a special appropriation as soon as we received those funds.
Yeah, and that document is in the, um,
Yeah.
Information for the board.
It just has nothing to do with the Essar funds, um, this is just a separate grant.
It's separate, and the money was, was sent, as I said, in January, so the money is sitting there. She would just like to have approval to place her order. And we only have about two weeks.
I move that we approve that grant.
Well.
That has nothing to do with it. Essar funds, any other questions? This is just a flat-out grant.
Alright, so your motion is to approve the, um, active learning grant.
But if I, well, you got a second, sorry. If I can, that, it's all tied together with the, uh, budget amendment. Um, so if you still have some additional questions, I know there's concern as far as getting that, that moved forward. Um, I, I don't want to jeopardize the whole, whole thing the way that was advertised, is the only concern. Because we don't have time to re-advertise.
Guess we have to hold that off until next week. So, in, I mean, the other items that are listed in there, if we wanted not to approve certain ones, that would potentially just jeopardize, just like approving some would jeopardize the other.
What, what I guess you could do is do the budget amendment, approve the budget amendment, but not appropriate the funds, but then go through and figure out which, uh, ones you want to appropriate, like the, the grant. Um, and then come back once you get the additional information that you have, appropriate those funds at that, that time.
So that, that kills the whole thing of trying to go through the line, not line.
What was that you said, Jimmy?
I said that just defeats the purpose of trying to go through this one item at a time to, to approve or not to approve, and try to make sense of it.
Well, really, as far as specific line items or projects, the board, I don't think can get to that level of, um, detail. What you're looking at is, you can do the categories, the, the major categories, instruction, transportation, those. But as far as going in and detailing, uh, a specific project, uh, the board can't get to that level of, uh, detail to it.
Well, when a request like this comes in, is that put in a category request, or is that just a request?
That, we do have that in your, um, the budget amendment resolution, um, and it's labeled, whether it's instruction
Okay.
or whatnot. That, that is in the resolution that way. So with some of those projects, uh, the, the board did move forward last fiscal year and appropriated those funds. So, but moving forward with that, some of those projects were already started, which is what you see in the, like, the SR2 funds and, and things like that. And they had, the school division did have, um, certain criteria that they had to send back to, uh, was it the state or federal government? Um, I'm not sure which agency funneled those down to, to you all. But the, some of those projects were started, just like the JROTC building. So it's not something that could be stopped at this point. So that, that's why the, we need the, the carryover funds appropriated for those specific projects.
And I guess, you know, to ask a question that, that, you know, I'm, you know, I want to know in the, in the public those too. You're looking at five point six million dollars, and I understand some of these grants, carryover funds and all of that. But at the end of the day, how much of this is coming back into the county? Then where the county can use it for CIPs or wherever else we may need it for? We ask, we get one number, and then next thing you know, it's, it's another number. So, it, five point six million dollars. We need to know, how much of this is coming back to the county? It's already been spent, it's been, evidently it's been funded. So, did the county put the money up for it?
Yeah, apparently so.
Okay, so how much of this is coming back to the county? That, that needs to be answered firm. And the number's not changed back before.
I'm sorry. Mr. Brienne, if I may, um, so all of this money, um, that comes through SR, so that's everything on the first page, and all the way through, until you get to the, um, ARPA pandemic bonus, all of that money will be reimbursed as soon as we file our reimbursement. So anything that has already been spent needs to be reimbursed, and all of that will come back. So we got an overall amount, when the grants were written, specific items were asked for with specific dollar amounts, and then that was approved by you all in the previous year. So whatever's been spent, if it has not already been requested reimbursement, that's what we've been working on, so we're, we're trying to get through that to get all of it back.
So, when you come back to the next meeting, can you have a total?
Can I what?
Have a total, a total on what it's going to be, what the reimbursement's going to be coming back to the county? What is going to be the grand total?
All of it.
So.
So, if I can, if we start at the top for the carryover, for the SR2, that, all, all of that money has already been spent, and all of the reimbursements have to be put in by September thirtieth of this year. So by the end of October, that eight hundred and forty-nine thousand will all be back to the county. On the second one, the school carryover funds for SR3, that grant is open until September of twenty twenty-four. So we have not yet spent all of that, but everything that we have spent, our goal is still to get everything reimbursed by the end of the summer that we've spent, and then once we get caught up, then we will be reimbursing, just like Mr. Tomlin said, as it's spent, we will go ahead and get the reimbursement put in. So that money will, as it's spent, will be coming back, starting in the fall. On, um, at the bottom, the school carryover HVAC grant, same thing, as it's spent, the reimbursement's been put in, um, we're working on that, um, hundred and one thousand right now. The school carryover on the second page for the unfinished learning, that's basically, um, for the most part, you'll see there, it's positions that were funded, and it was for a two-year grant, so it's for this year that we're ending, and then next school year. So, um, with, with the lines, you'll see where the four additional full-time paraprofessionals, those four lines there. So approximately half of that was spent during this fiscal year, and we're working on, on getting those reimbursements done, so that money will be coming back. And the other half of that, we have until July of next year to spend, and then we'll get those reimbursements in. The school carryover before and after-school program, again, that's a, that's a two-year, so that's for after-school tutoring for this year and for next year. So we'll work on getting this year's funds in. Um, same thing for summer school, we should have something in by the end of next week, half of that was for last summer, the other half will be for this summer, and our summer school will be over. So that should be, um, that one should be completed by the end of August. The educator recruitment and retention, that's a two-year grant, we've currently spent ten thousand dollars. Um, and we're working on those reimbursements, the other fifteen thousand we have to spend over the next year. The new construction funds, you all are aware of those. Um, the ARPA pandemic bonus, um, those funds have already been received, as a matter of fact, everything, the rest of the way down, with the exception of the National, National School Lunch Program, all of those funds have already been received, um, they just, nothing's been spent. So the National School Lunch Program grant, we got sixty-six thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars, we just got that this spring. We have until April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four to expend that. It's specific to purchasing hot and cold food well units at the middle school and the high school. And as we spend it, we'd like to get those reimbursements, and our, uh, nutrition director would like to be able to order those this summer, if you all approve that appropriation. And then again, as soon as the product is in and it's paid for, then we'll file for the reimbursement.
I want to, um, address the CIP, the school board sent you a letter. The, uh, school board sent the supervisors a letter regarding the current school board location, and if we moved in that direction, I think the question that came back through written correspondence from the supervisors was, um, how will that, uh, new construction funding be used for CIPs? If you look at the budget transmittal letter, you can see that the school board prioritized, um, flooring upgrades at NES at a cost of three seventy-nine, three eighty, replacement of the NES playground for five hundred thousand, repairs to the concrete walkways for seventy thousand, eight sixty, as well as a rooftop stairway at NES for sixty-three thousand, seven five six. Those are projects that Mr. Tadlock had mentioned earlier this evening. When you add up those projects, that turns, that, that equals one million, thirteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars. Uh, the total of the new construction funding that's listed on page two that Ms. Booth just reviewed with you, the grand total is one million, one thirty-four, one seventy-two. So if you applied the one million, thirteen thousand, nine nine six on those CIPs I just mentioned, that would give us a remaining balance of one hundred twenty thousand, one seventy-six. Um, which, you know, I haven't had a, next Thursday, I have a special called school board meeting, but, um, that money could be used as just some, um, needed renovations if, you know, the board approved that. So that would address a lot of these capital improvement projects that have been pending, and that have been a part of your thoughtful deliberate discussion to make sure that county taxpayer dollars are used wisely.
Okay. That does answer a few questions. Any other questions for Dr. Wargo or Tara? HVAC grant, you're almost completed on spending that money?
So, um, I forwarded the update that Mr. Brand had sent, he said if, um, he's a little disappointed in the time that it's taking to get that completed, but it sounds like by this fall, that project should be complete.
And you are doing, let's see, I think you have some more work you're doing with Honeywell and all, trying to upgrade the control.
Yes, sir.
That's all part of this grant.
All the Jace replacements?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I just wanted clarification. On the SR2 and SR3 funds, you say you have spent most of them, or you've spent them all, you're waiting for a reimbursement to come back to the county?
Yes, all of, all of the SR2 funds have been spent.
Okay.
And then I would say more than half, definitely more than half of the SR3.
Okay.
Um, because at, at, as of now, a little over one million of the one point five for the JROTC building has been spent, so that automatically drops the rest down. And eight hundred and fifteen thousand of that's already been reimbursed, and one hundred ninety-one, four ninety is in the pending. So I would expect to get that reimbursement soon, and about half of the rest of it has already been spent.
Okay.
You said the school carryover funds, SR2, have all been spent?
This, that is correct, SR2 has all been spent.
Well, I'm looking at four hundred and ten thousand, four, I don't see any of that, that whole column there has been reimbursed, that's eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
That is correct. That is what, we are, we are playing catch-up, and, and that is all part of that, and all of that should be done this summer.
Playing catch-up, I'm not even sure you're in the ballpark.
Mr. Tomlin, as I stated earlier, we have had significant transition with our finance Mr. Tomlin, as I stated earlier, we have had significant transition with our finance directors. Ms. Booth has worked tirelessly on evenings and weekends. She is making great progress, as noted by the auditor, and as well as our county treasurer, who has been very supportive in making sure that the reimbursements are flowing the way they should be. So, we are seeing that, that pattern, and as I said before, we're committed to making sure that that happens in a timely manner. And we are addressing it in a very serious and strategic manner.
What was this, what's this gonna do to our audit? We're gonna have so much expenditures and nothing coming in. Our carryover balance should be way down. You wonder why I'm not running for reelection? You just heard it right now.
Ms. Booth, Dr. Walco, I will say again that I know Ms. Booth kinda stepped into some things, things that happened before, so that's not her fault. I'm not blaming her for that. But, the taxpayer out here wants to know what is going on. I am constantly bombarded with comments and questions from taxpayers about the school budget. And they wanna know how far the school budget is behind on their accounting. And that's a big question. And I asked Ms. Booth that at our last Thursday's meeting, and she didn't have an answer. I know she kinda avoided the question. But, how many months are you behind on your current accounting in this fiscal year, or this current year?
As far as I know, we are working very diligently to make deadlines and, you know, be fiscally responsible. So, I'm not sure what you're, I'm not actually sure what you're asking.
All right.
I will say reimbursements are coming back, and I think Mr. Tadlock can confirm that. That was one of our big issues.
Well, I think, let me just redo my question again. Your accounting, your school's accounting, getting it up to date with, with our treasurer, Ellen Kirby, getting that up to date, how many months behind are you on that?
Thank you for that clarification. So, I think what you're asking about is the monthly reconciliations.
Yes.
And Ms. Booth, as well as Ellen, they have planned meetings. We have been working on that, and I believe they have three months that match, and then there are some other reconciliations that have been worked on but aren't matching. So, that's the purpose of the, the planned meetings with the county treasurer.
Yes, I understand that. So, you say you're only three months behind?
That would be for Tara to answer. She's been working on this.
All right. Ms. Booth?
I believe four months are complete, July, August, September, October, part of November. The others, there are some questions, and Ms. Kirby has graciously agreed to sit with me so that we can look over it, but we plan on having it done before the end of this month. And I'm sorry, I didn't understand that that was your question last Thursday.
It's all right.
So, I-
He finally clarified it, so you're fine.
Yeah, I finally got it clarified. Sometimes I have to do it two, three times, 'cause I'm thinking of something else and running my mouth.
You can't do two things at one time.
Well, you have to sometimes.
I know.
All right, so, I appreciate you trying to get it clarified, appreciate all the extra time you're putting in. And also, with Ms. Kirby, she's doing a lot of extra work trying to help y'all get this straight. But, I just hope you can get this caught up within a reasonable amount of time, so we don't get another bad audit.
We will have it done before the end of June.
All right.
We will have the reconciliation done.
Also, I wanna address the past audit. What steps have you done to correct the problems that were in that past audit? And how far along are you on those steps?
So, I have a, I have my notes with me. I can try to answer that. Let's see, the school, number one, for the audit, school board public hearing on budget. It was not advertised 10 days prior to the public hearing. We have addressed that by publishing 10 days prior to the public hearing. Number two, in the audit, there were five main areas. Number two was local cafeteria collections. That school cafeteria bank account is maintained at the school board office. No other transactions flow through this account, and there should be a periodic transfer of cafeteria collections to the primary bank account. That actually went back to the, the county's bank account. We did that right away when that audit recommendation was made. I reached out to the auditor and said, "We wanna make sure we take the correct action with this." So, we worked with Ellen, the county treasurer, to make sure that that happened, and that has. We're actually scheduled quarterly to make those, those returns to the county, and our next return is, I believe, happening next week, so it's quarterly. It'll, so this is our second transfer that we'll be doing. Let me see here. Number three, appropriations. This concerned me, so I had to call the auditor about this too. Expenditures exceeded appropriation in the school cafeteria fund. So, I reached out to the auditor to get clarification on that, and he said that, that the former director of finance had not carried over or requested a carryover of the school nutrition funds from the previous year to the new school year. So, he just said to make sure that we formalize that. We do meet monthly with the county treasurer, as well as the county administrator, and we talked about that at our past meeting, probably last week, or maybe two weeks ago. And we're on track with that.
Okay.
So, we are definitely are taking these suggestions very seriously. Expenditure reimbursement requests, Title I and Title VI. We needed to file reimbursements for those. What I did is contact the Virginia Department of Education, who helped to break down Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title V, and Title VI. We have been requesting reimbursements against all of those except Title III, because that money goes, flows through a regional program. So, we are diligently reimbursing against Title I, Title II, Title IV, V, and VI. So, pleased with the progress on that. And our last item was what you had mentioned, Mr. Haney. So, thank you for that clarification, 'cause I wasn't sure of your question. Procedure should be in place to reconcile expenditure detail of the school fund to the records of the county treasurer. We have been trying to do that monthly. Because it was not done prior to Ms. Booth coming on board, she had some backtracking to do, and she's working closely with the county treasurer. Again, I appreciate, you know, Ellen's efforts very much in supporting that corrective action. So, what I can tell you is, as I said before, we have taken the auditor's recommendations very seriously. We have a planned approach to the corrective actions, and we plan to make sure that those don't happen again in any future audits.
Just keep us informed.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Booth, I do appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I know I've, I may have offended you, but I'm just trying to get answers. I have to do what I have to do, 'cause the public wants answers.
Absolutely.
I was not offended.
Okay.
But no, I am, I am committed to Northumberland, and I am making every effort to get things in the right place.
All right. That's the goal. We'll try to get it all in place and satisfy the taxpayer.
Absolutely.
When you took over in November, you were at least four months behind in reconciliations. How many months in addition to the four?
So, my understanding, and I wish Ms. Kirby was here to correct me if I say this incorrectly. I believe that the reconciliations through the previous fiscal year were done when I came. On paper, I think it looked like it was done, but maybe the numbers weren't accurate, is my understanding.
I thought Ms. Walco had stated that it hadn't been done.
It wasn't done from the, for this fiscal year?
I don't mean to put words in your mouth. You please, don't let me put words in your mouth.
It's okay, Mr. Brand. When I, you know, maybe I speak too broadly, but we want it done correctly. And so, we went back to July and started in July to make sure that everything's matching and that because of the four, the previous concern that came up, that perhaps numbers were matching, but then they weren't matching. We wanted to start in July and make sure that the county treasurer, as well as our office, those numbers agreeably match. I don't know if that makes sense, but we wanted to start with July and move forward. So, that's what we're toiling with right now. So, we're about halfway through, expecting to, our goal is to make sure it happens by June 30th, because we wanna have a, a very, we want our audit to show that we've done everything that we could to correctively address any concerns that were raised.
Well, my question and concern is, why weren't these processes in place always? Reconciliation of books should be done monthly, et cetera. I mean, frankly, one of the things I'm concerned about is, this is not the first time we've had an issue with books, et cetera, with the school system, prior to, I think, even prior to both of you being part of it. And I have to say, I think it's a question, I think the citizens need to decide, do we need a different method of selecting school board members instead of electing? This is a management problem, and the school board is at the top. You're the administrative person, Dr. Walco, but this is a problem that has been ongoing, and it surfaces head, and it calms down. Ms. Booth came in behind the worst ballgame you could ever be, like a, a new captain of a ship that's sinking. A light togo took over for Captain Smith of the Titanic. That's where you're in. You're in a bad position, but this is where it should have never gotten to this point. And I think we need to go back to selecting school board members and not electing them anymore. And I think the petition needs to be considered. Mr. Tadlock, would you ask our county attorney to find out the process? Don't have to have it till the next meeting, and it will probably not be for this year. But I think the citizens, who, if they're upset, this would be to express it. 'Cause I'm, it's nothing against either one of yourselves, but again, Mr. Haney says he gets all kinds of questions and tries to explain it. I can't explain it. There's no way I can explain this mismatched stuff, and not, books not being done. We had the same situation with a prior bookkeeper, and it was, I think, eight months behind. And that's, and this, whatever. I'm, again, you wonder why I don't wanna seek reelection, and this is a prime reason. First, I had hair when I started. I don't have anymore. I can actually get a picture. I had more anyway.
I appreciate that feedback. You know, in the last two years, we have had four directors of finance, and that's a lot. And I'm, and I'm not here to make excuses, however, there has been just as significant, you know, we, we had every intention of having a smooth transition, because we brought in a finance director when our retiring finance director was leaving, so that they could shadow each other. But even with the best intent, unfortunately, we are on our fourth finance director. As I said before, Ms. Booth is working very hard to address all of the areas of concern. We do need to, we, and as I said, we are doing this in a timely fashion with urgency. So, you know, we will continue to be transparent with you. If you have questions, or if you don't know the answers, please always call, stop by. And we'll be happy to share with you, because as I said before, we took this very seriously, and we wanna make sure it's done right. Not just today, every single day, every single month. So, we don't want this kind of situation, ever.
But I think you have a lot of work to get done between now and the 30th of June.
Well, they're not alone. We do too.
Yeah, we do too.
That's right.
But I don't know, I don't quite see how you're gonna get it done in that timeframe.
The reconciliations are gonna be the most time-consuming, and we will really need some support with that, because we're trying very hard. And there are planned meetings set up to address that between the county and the school division.
And I know Ms. Kirby has said she's gonna do everything in the world to get it done.
She has been absolutely wonderful, very supportive, so we can't thank the county administrator, Mr. Tadlock, his office, Ms. Kirby, just everyone who's rallied together to make sure that Ms. Booth has the support that she needs to make it happen.
And then, if we can just keep it from getting behind.
Absolutely.
In our next upcoming year. Because we got citizens here tonight that have, that have asked a lot of the questions, and they give me the devil for it.
Well, everyone is always welcome to contact me, and I freely give out my cell phone number, so, you know, I'm always available most of the time, except when I'm sleeping. So, you feel free to call me. And I'll, I'll help, and if, I'm not suggesting the phone is the only way many of you know you can pop in, or I can meet you at the schools, and we can go over things.
But you may have a line standing at the door.
Well, we will too.
We will too.
I invite the public. I want, you know, I'm here to be part of the solution. And again, we take it very seriously, and we're working on it. Yes, sir.
Keep your head up.
Yes, sir.
Keep your head up. Keep a P M A.
Positive mental attitude is P M A.
Do the best you can. Do the best you can.
Yes, sir.
All right? 'Cause we, we got problems too. We gotta correct them. Right?
Could you look into your website and see if it could be a better route or a better way of the citizens getting into the financial documents?
Yes, the finance documents are published monthly on Board Docs. So, if you go to, you know, I can look at that, but I think if a person doesn't know they're published monthly on Board Docs, that could be confusing.
Understand the process is pretty lengthy to find it.
So, if you have any citizens who are concerned, if they're comfortable coming to me, and we can talk about it and come up with a plan that would make it even better, I'm happy to do that. I also, on my own, will take a look at it and see if, you know, what we could do to streamline the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other board members have any comments or questions?
I would suggest, don't even bury it under the monthly thing. Just have a separate tab, Finance. Have your budget, and then your expenditures monthly and everything. That's what the state of Virginia has agencies. They can drill down to specific transactions. And that would, your transparency, then they can see what's done, and they won't have to dig forever.
Okay.
'Cause transparency, I fully believe that. That's what I've always believed in.
Absolutely.
Too much information sometimes can obfuscate things, but that's the, the way it is sometimes.
Right. Currently, I think it's on, it's Board Docs, it's on the regular meeting, it's under Finance, and then you have to click there. But I hear what you're saying, and if that would help, we're happy to look at that and see what we can do with it.
And I don't have a problem with the county doing the same thing. I'm not expecting you to have to do anything the county shouldn't do either. 'Cause we have a separate thing that Mr. Tadlock has. You have the budget, and then you have the audits. They're right together. You can see that. Of course, your audit's confined within that. But, I mean, the citizens shouldn't have to expect to dig down to get the basic information of where things are expended.
Yes, sir.
All right, we haven't heard from Ronnie. Ronnie, you have any comments or questions?
I'm here to prepare a live announcement tonight.
All right. I didn't, I didn't wanna leave you out. I know you're the last to say anything, but.
I'm here today.
All right. Staff, have any questions?
No, not really.
Not, not related to that, no, sir.
All right. Dr. Walco, Ms. Booth, I appreciate you all coming in.
Thank you for inviting us.
Look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Likewise. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Walco, what else you have?
The only other item that I have is the Northern Neck Regional Jail is seeking the increase for their budget amendment for fiscal year '23. The board had asked for some additional information related to that and provided that information, reached out. I didn't hear any other questions. There, again, there is no cost to the county. It is, each locality does need to approve the budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the budget amendment for the jail.
Second. I have a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. What else you have, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move we continue our meeting till next Tuesday at 5:30.
That would be the 20th at 5:30.
5:30.
All right. Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Yes, before we do, Mr. Taylor, would you reach out to Mr. Davis? I talked to him, we had a meeting, PDC meeting on this past Tuesday. So I told him I asked you to call him. We talked about the cigarette tax.
Yes, sir. I've reached out to him, and he's provided me some information or starting to send me some information related to that.
I've got one quick thing, Mr. Chairman. $5.6 million. As these reimbursements come in, I want the board to start receiving updates and the amounts that's coming in. And at the end of the day, I want to see it totaled as $5.6 million.
All right.
That's why I want to see when it was spent and when reimbursement was requested. As you can see, some of them have been spent, haven't been no reimbursement.
Key word today, boys and girls, accountability.
Oh, yes.
All right, gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor.
Yes, Mr. Walter.
Unless you want to withdraw your motion for more discussion.
No, I'm good.
No, I ain't withdrawing the motion.
All right. All right. No other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank everyone for coming, and we'll see you back here on the 20th of June at 5:30 PM.